All right, good evening, everybody. We call the regular council meeting of June ninth, twenty twenty-five to order at six P. M. Welcome, everybody. And first things first, we'll do invocation with the City of Madison Police Chaplain, Robin Kramer.
Pray with me. Almighty Father, as our city council gathers tonight, we seek your divine guidance and wisdom, Lord. May this opening prayer set the tone for harmonious and open discussions, Lord. We just ask that your glory flows and that the best interest of our community is at hand, Lord. And again, we just thank you for all that you've given to us. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you, Chaplain. All right. Follow me in the pledge of allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can I get the roll call, please?
Mayor Finley.
Here.
Councilmember Robleski.
Here.
Councilmember Spears.
Here.
Councilmember Powell. Councilmember Shaw. Councilmember Bartlett.
Here.
Councilmember Denzine.
Here.
Council President Seifert.
I am here. So we've got a quorum. Amendments to the agenda, any tonight?
No, there are no amendments to the agenda.
All right, cool. That will go ahead and move into approval of the minutes. First up is from our special session on sixteen May.
Move to approve.
I'll second. We've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that? No, can't get the vote.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell, Councilmember Shaw, Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
All right, the motion passes. And next up is the regular session from twenty-seven May.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Can I get the vote?
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Council President Seifert.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell, Councilmember Shaw, Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Abstain.
All right, that motion passes. Okay, now we'll move into presentation and awards, and I thank what everyone is here for tonight. We will do Madison Fire and Rescue Promotion Ceremony.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we have twelve fire department promotions to recognize. These twelve members were promoted on May twelfth or May twenty-sixth. In late April, they participated in an assessment center that we conducted internally. This assessment center was one full day of testing for each rank that consisted of several dimensions. All the candidates performed well in the assessment center, and it was one of the most competitive processes I've seen. We promoted six drivers, four captains, one battalion chief, and one deputy chief. The Assessment Center for Driver consisted of an oral interview, written test, street driving, and pump scenario. The Assessment Center for Captain and battalion chief consisted of an oral interview, presentation, in basket, and tactical scenario. The top candidates for captain and battalion chief then participated in a final interview with me. From there, I made final selections and rankings of the top candidates. The deputy chief position consisted of an oral interview with me. We will now conduct a badge-pinning ceremony for the following members. As I call your name, please come up and face the audience. Please bring the person that is pending your badge as well as any family members. Driver Tyler Drew, he cannot be present tonight. Driver Jordan Fielding. Next is next is driver Grayson Hope. Driver Jeremiah Johnson. Next is driver Curtis Rosner. Next is driver Peter Puccirelli. Captain Stephen Chop. All right. Captain Ryan Ledford. Captain Stephen Long. Captain Gage Houghton. Battalion Chief Jason Tidwell. And Deputy Chief Chad Menard. I will also add that it's their anniversary today. Thank you, and please join me one more time in a round of applause for these guys.
That's just awesome. That's awesome to see that. Congratulations to all of you. And congratulations to the families. I know you guys put a lot into allowing your significant other to be here, and we appreciate that. Citizens of Madison appreciate it greatly. So thank you all.
Thank you, guys.
All right.
You know how to clear a room, John.
I do. I can guarantee you, it ain't the first time. Okay, all right, even though folks leaving, we're going to enter into public comments. And for public comments, we ask that you keep your discussion to three minutes or less. As you approach the podium, please, or once you get to the podium, let us know your district and/or address for the record and your name. And first up, I actually have Mr. Jeff Burgreen, who has asked to speak.
Wanted to ask about the
If you don't mind, just name and district.
Oh, Jeff Burgreen. I'm in District Two. Ms. Spears.
Awesome. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Oh, you're good. You're good.
I just want to talk about the public mowing again, the roadside mowing. I talked to Steve Smith on April twenty-eighth in this building about not getting done. I know supposedly they're behind, but he said they would get them out there that week, all down the Byers Road area. Still, to this day, hadn't been cut. It's caused me a lot of problems where water from the current rains of last month went in my field, and because they couldn't get down the ditch, the grass is so thick. And three weeks ago, I seen the contractor, they were turning out that area, but I don't know where they were going, but they didn't cut nothing out there. And on May thirtieth, they did cut about a half a mile pile road. And I hadn't seen them since. There's nine other landowners out there that are wondering kind of the same thing. Most of them are older. I've talked to two of them. And I just wanted to bring it to your attention again. And Ms. Spears has, we have contact, I've had email of her, but Mr. Smith won't respond back to me. And I had a neighbor, he wouldn't respond back. He called and was wanting to know the same thing. But that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, sir. All right, that's all we had that signed up to speak ahead. So is there anyone else desiring to speak to council this evening?
Margie Daly.
Hold on, timeout. Can you restart the call?
Thank you. I don't have anything prepared, so I'm not going to take the full three minutes.
All right.
My concern is that this property has come around again for the third time with the farmer and the developer, and it's eighty-nine acres. We keep adding and adding more cluster bills, and, you know, this is definitely going to displace water. We keep vacating drainage easements. The water goes, I have so many videos, what has gone on with this water and damage to other people's property, that I foresee a disaster happening with this. And I think it's very unfair, and I think we should consider that these, the Burgreens are a family that's been here a long time, and I believe that we should have a little more respect for our farmers, and we should consider about this water. It is going to be a It is going to be a problem when you build 89 acres, and there's a retention pond currently. It's going to overflow once you put those houses in. This just does not make any kind of sense from you guys. Please think about this. Do not destroy a farmer's livelihood for a few houses. Give it some time, and the farmer says he wants another five years to farm. I mean, our city should do that for him. We should be more compassionate about farmers and how, you know, we have hardly any left in Madison City. So, I would just ask that you reconsider this and vote no. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else desiring to speak to council this evening? Seeing none, we will close public comments. We're going to move into consent agenda and finance committee report.
Okay, the finance committee has reviewed the regular and periodic bills, and on the consent agenda tonight, we have a resolution to authorize the disposal and destruction of certain department records and according to the proper procedures from the state. And we're authorizing a one-year network and cybersecurity support services with White Rhino Security for both new and existing city facilities in the amount of $15,000 from information technology budget, authorizing a one-year agreement with steri-shred, steri-cycle shred services for $160 to $50 a month to be paid from the city clerk's budget, acceptance of an insurance settlement from Alabama Municipal Insurance Corporation for a claim on an accident from April 14th, and that is in the amount of $9,282.17 less the $1,000 deductible, and a resolution for providing the disposal of personal property of negligible value of a set of 55 laptop computers via GovDeals. And then, we're accepting a donation from thepropertyroom.com to be deposited in the Madison Police Department donation account, and acceptance of a donation from walk-ons in Town Madison to the fire department for $500. With that, I will move to...
Second?
All right, motion and second. Is there any discussion?
I was just going to bring to mind that White Rhino, I had seen some concern about White Rhino. They're a Florida business, and they do have a Madison license. So, just wanted to put that on the record, should there be any concerns about that. Thank you, Ms. Lisa.
Yeah. And I'll also add to that, it's per some other folks, it's also standard business to not necessarily, heck, get a business license until you know you have a contract in hand to execute, so, in a specific municipality, so. Also, I wanted to add, I guess, we, while it's not on consent agenda, that you also had walk-ons also make another $500 donation to the Madison Police Foundation, and because of that designation, doesn't have to be on here, so. But certainly want to thank them publicly for that donation, or donations, so. Okay, anyone else? Can we get the vote?
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Councilmember Shaw?
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
All right, motion passes, and presentation reports. Mayor Finley.
Don't have anything tonight.
Nothing tonight, all right. Council District 1.
Yes, sir. I just want to mention several... Well, Mayor Finley and I attended the Armed Services Celebration. It was a great week last week. We're not going to talk about the softball game, because better luck next year.
Yeah.
Yeah. But it was just a wonderful opportunity to honor our military and get a bit of a military update of what's going on at the arsenal. And I did want to announce, we have an opening, we have a vacancy on the Cemetery Committee. If you have a heart for the history of Madison, interested in that preservation, I would encourage you to go online. You can apply at madisonal.gov, click on Communities, you'll see a drop-down menu for Board and Committees, click Apply, scroll down to Cemetery Committee. I'm hoping to be able to nominate or recommend those people at our next council meeting. So, if you're interested, and if you have any questions and having trouble navigating, just shoot me an email, and we'll get you all, you know, an application in for you, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. District 2.
Okay, I have Resolution Number 2025-192-R, authorizing the funding from the Council Special Projects Budget for the purchase of laptops for MPD patrol vehicles in the amount of not to exceed $12,000, authorizing the purchase of ProLogic ITS LLC, or from that place. And the total purchase is going to be $81,577.65 for 15 laptops associated and associated equipment, and that is to be paid for between that special projects money and a donation from Madison County Commissioner Haraway. So, with that, I'll move to approve.
Sorry.
She can move to approve.
I'll second.
Whatever. I'll second it. Lisa, you figured it out.
Okay, Councilmember Spears, you moved. You made the motion. She's going to second.
Okay.
All right, motion and second. Any discussion? Just want to make sure, I think I understand it. The total that'll be spent is $81,577, of which 12 of it comes from us. The balance will come from county commission.
Correct.
All right, cool. All right, we good? Okay. All right, can I get the vote?
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Councilmember Shaw?
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
Okay, and just thank you to Commissioner Haraway for his donation towards those laptops. That's very generous. Also, I was wondering if we could get an update, would it be possible to get an update on the mowing situation?
Sure. Steve met with Tidewater last week. They have replaced their lead on that, a lot of it based on his feedback, and should have been regrouped and going strong again today. Public Works also with 25 of the 31 days in May that had rain, and Public Works is also doing everything they can to get all of the storm damage from three weeks ago picked up, and still working through the city. As you can see on Hughes Road, times out in Limestone County, we still have some work to do. So, for everybody out there, we appreciate your patience with the rain, with the storms. It is going to take a while. We're sorry for the inconvenience, but they are working on it.
Okay. And Mr. Burgreen, if you could just keep me updated, if you see a mowing or if they're not mowing, keep in contact, please. Thank you. And that's all.
Awesome. Okay, we'll skip Districts 3 and 4, and we'll move to District 5.
Okay, I also attended the walk-ons ribbon cutting, and in addition to the donation to fire and police, they also made a donation to both representatives from James Clemens High School and Bob Jones High School, and so we wanted to thank them for starting off right in opening their place in Town Madison. And so, I think I've been there three times already. It's one of my favorite places, and so, yay, welcome to the city of Madison. Also, wanted to share that the library started its summer reading kickoff on May 31st, and our public library system does such a great job in contributing to literacy and having programs that help keep kids reading over the summer. And so, if you haven't had a chance to go in there, visit your local library and sign up for the summer reading program. That's it.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Council District 6.
I would just also like to thank the Public Works for all the hard work they've done recently to clean up after that storm. It really did devastate a lot of the trees in our area, and it was sad to see that, but they have done a really good job. I know there's still some stuff out there, and they'll get it to it as soon as they can, but I really appreciate all that they have done. It was really a big job for them. And I also want to congratulate all the firemen that got the promotions today. I think it's great. And that's all I have.
All right, cool. District 7, so first thing I've got is Resolution 2025-191-R, authorizing funding from Council Special Projects for Fire Department Command Staff Leadership Training with the Eagle Center for Leadership in an amount not to exceed $18,072.
We have to approve. Second?
All right, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that? You know, I want to thank you, Brandy, for bringing this forward. I think what you'll see through that and the experience there, I think will be invaluable for you and your command staff, so. Interested to see the results of that, so. All right, we got motion and a second. Can we get the vote, please?
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Councilmember Shaw?
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
All right, that motion passes. Thank you all. And just so everybody's tracking, I think, in my Auburn, I'll call it beer math, that's going to leave about $51,000 left in Council Special Projects as of those two resolutions, so. That's about how much we got left for this year. I guess only other thing I'll say is, I too was at the Armed Forces luncheon, and hearing General Mohan talk from AMC. One, he was very comedic. I envied his wittiness. And then, you know, lots of great things going on. The Arsenal lost some great things going on for Tennessee Valley coming up, hopefully, if we'll get some things happening in DC, so. Lots of stuff on the horizon. Okay, because of that, we've got board committee appointments. Don't have any tonight, so I'll move into public hearings, and I think, Mary Beth, you're the next contestant on the Price is Right.
Yeah, before you proposed ordinance number 2025-1... Excuse me, 2025-129, and this is to rezone 89.27 acres from agriculture to cluster zoning. This project should be familiar to you. This is the third time that council will have considered this property. So, here is the 89 acres. It is on the west side of Bowers Road, south of Huntsville, Brown's Ferry, on the western part of the city. And you can see it's currently used for agricultural purposes. The property is zoned agriculture. They are requesting cluster zoning. Cluster zoning requires submittal of a development plan with it, and the development plan that has been submitted by the applicant is shown here on the screen. It proposes 190 units, and then they have an open space component. In cluster zoning, you're required to set aside at least 20% of the site for open space with their detention pond, which has a walking path around it, and their other open space areas, they're at about 31.6%, and you can see the breakout of that. The pond, walking trail areas is the bulk of that at 23 acres. Cluster zoning requires a 50-foot landscape buffer for residential property adjacent to active agricultural production. This is the first project in the city that we've had where this has been triggered, and those buffers are provided along the north property line, along the west property line, and along the south property line. A good portion of the buffer on the south property line is made up of where the detention pond area is. Our West Side Master Plan, which has now been surpassed by the Comprehensive Plan, had recommended a possible road along the west side of this property, and so, there is a provision that half of that buffer could go towards future right-of-way, and obviously, if the street went in, then the buffer would no longer be needed. But that was provided for in this plan. You can see that there are two access points provided to the subdivision on Bowers Road. There's a main access point kind of midway along that eastern property line, and then there is one further north, which would comply with city requirements. Fire Department requires multiple access points when you're over 50 units, and then they also are showing stubs to the south and the north, which again, would be consistent with our typical process requirements. There are three phases proposed. They're about equal in size, and our growth policy does require that if you've got a project that's coming forward for rezoning, that it include a phased approach to the development. This project, the last time this project was considered by the Planning Commission was in April, and at that meeting, they did recommend to approve it on a 5-3 vote. One of the members was absent. Just a little brief history, in August and October of last year, the original concept plan, which is shown there on the left, was considered by the Planning Commission. Initially, it was supported by the Planning Commission, then the Planning Commission didn't end up supporting it after the city council denied it. At that time, the project was 198 units, with a little over 21% of open space. The applicant changed their plan, and you'll recall, your last meeting, you actually considered this current development plan, and that was in February of '25, and you, the council ended up not supporting the rezoning request. The applicant decided to go back to the Planning Commission with the current development plan, because the Planning Commission had not seen that development plan. The previous West Side Master Plan had called for this property to be community facilities. You'll recall that at that time, the school, when we did the master plan, the school district was thinking there might be school facilities up there. A secondary land use within the West Side Master Plan is single-family homes, and so, as we reported out last time, it was allowed by the West Side Master Plan at that time. The Comprehensive Plan was adopted by the Planning Commission in February of this year, and then acknowledged by the city council in March, and the comp plan is showing this as mixed residential conservation, so the single-family product would be consistent with that. Go back to just the proposed development plan and comment that later in your agenda, you do have a development agreement for this project, and we can discuss it at that time. Happy to answer any questions. The applicant is here, and during the public hearing, I expect, unless you want him to come up before, the applicant does have a presentation.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I guess with that, we'll open the public hearing, but applicant, we'll let you guys go first, based on your presentation. And I think, per ordinance, I think we've got up to 15 minutes, I think, I'm going off of memory, but, yeah, 15 minutes.
Okay. Mark Anderson, 2410 Allen Drive, Huntsville. So, we're here tonight requesting the approval for the 89 acres on Bowers Road to rezone from Mag to R2 Cluster. The, I have a contract to purchase the property from the current landowner, Jason Burgreen. And the current landowner, Jason, I believe you should have received correspondence from him a while back with some information, and also an update recently from Jason, I think that was forwarded to you. But, so throughout the process, I mean, we have listened to comments, and we've made changes and changed our development proposal and listened very carefully. So, as Mary Beth said, the original plan we started with on the left had 198 lots, had a 20%, 20% to 21% set aside, and if you see the revised plan on the right, we decreased to 190 lots with a 31% set aside, which the primary increase is due to the size of the detention pond for stormwater detention. So, but the plan still consists of a landscape buffer around the perimeter of the property, which is required under the R2 cluster zoning. The next PowerPoint slide shows you pre-development, post-development drainage plan. So, the left side is pre-development, and the right side is post-development. You'll see on both charts that the pre and post, the adjoining tract to the south, has approximately 17 acres that's shaded in purple that drains to the north onto our site. So, in previous meetings, comment was made... previous meetings, comment was made that post-development, our site would drain to the adjoining site to the south. And the actual data does show the opposite of that. The southern tract that adjoins us will continue to drain to our site, and our engineers who are here tonight have designed our detention facility to capture and manage, uh, the runoff stormwater from our development, as well as to capture these seventeen acres to the south that will continue to drain toward our direction. So, our post-development plan will certainly be an improvement, you know, to the overall, uh, picture there. Uh, third, I just have a, a copy of the, um, Madison Utilities Sanitary Sewer Agreement, saying that they will furnish sanitary sewer to the property. Of course, it'll be at our expense to connect, no expense to the City of Madison, of course, for that. Uh, next, I have copies of the, uh, traffic study that we had done. On the left side, the memo is dated, I know you, it's hard to see, but dated December twelfth, twenty-twenty-four. The memo on the right has been updated. It's dated May the nineteenth of twenty-five. So, the conclusion of the December memo stated that no turn lanes or improvements are warranted at either entrance as a result of our proposed development on Bowers Road. So, the conclusion of the May memo on the right, uh, he also states that he does not see any reason to amend his initial memo and stands by his initial conclusions. And he also did, we didn't, he did, of course, the research, but he also placed tubes for traffic count. I mean, it was a full-blown study. So, um, as far as landscaping, this is just an envision, just an example of what, uh, these are green giants. So, the buffer around the property, um, there'll be a landscape plan submitted with the plans to the Planning Commission, but, um, and different species of trees, you know, mixed in. But this will just give you an idea of the buffer that we intend to, to have around the perimeter of property once these green giants are, are fully grown. So, the, um, finishing up my comments, though, our request and proposed, uh, development plan falls in line with the newly adopted Madison-on-Track twenty-four-five Comprehensive Plan. The place type map designated this site as mixed residential conservation, which supports R-two cluster zoning. So, our development plan proposes a density of approximately two units per acre, which is well below the twenty units per acre cap that was adopted under the new Comprehensive Plan. So, the Comprehensive Plan that was recently, uh, adopted was unanimously adopted by the Planning Commission and, of course, the City Council. And our rezoning, uh, correct, request was approved last month after the changes, uh, by the Planning Commission. The staff has recommended approval. Uh, the current landowner, along with our group tonight, respectfully asks for your approval. Thank you. If you have any questions, we'll be, be glad to address them. And my engineer's here also.
Okay. All right. And what we'll do is we'll kind of let other folks come up as well, get questions from them, and then if we have questions, we can all-
Okay.
-handle those at one time.
Sure.
Okay. Anyone from the public wanting to comment on this, uh, item? Okay. And if you don't mind, just as well for public comments, just for the record, if you'll state your name and district, uh, and/or address for the record.
Uh, we're Jeff and Tammy Burgreen. We live on Burgreen Road, Madison, and this is in District Two. Uh, we own the property to the south and to the east and to the west. If this is approved, there will be a farm field actively on every side of this development. This whole road is nothing but farmland right now, and all of it's been actively farmed by five different farmers. Uh, we worry about if this does happen, about the drainage. We have other subdivisions that were beside right now, and they drain off onto farmland and cause many problems. Or trash being thrown on our property. And then there's, you're looking at four hundred more vehicles on Bowers Road, and I don't think Bowers Road could handle four hundred more vehicles. And, you know, our farmers are vital to our community. Dale Strong just said here lately that they're critical to North Alabama, and we're losing land every day. We know growth is coming, and we just don't think this is a good time for it.
Yeah, I agree. It's, uh, right now, even with the detour and that traffic study, that second traffic study was a twenty-four-hour period. I was down there both days when he put it down and took it up. And, uh, it's pretty brutal right now, and I can't imagine four hundred more vehicles down through there. Uh, the road and infrastructure just ain't designed for it. I mean, it's, uh, it's been a pain trying to farm down there in the last month and a half with all this deterring going on. I can't imagine with four hundred homes, and it's gonna be like that all the time, you know? And far as the drainage, that, that field was actually two ninety-acre parcels that dri- and it was, uh, drain basin put in there that drains at the corner of Bowers Road. And that took care of all the water. It's probably thirty acres when it really rains hard that it dissipates, you know, unable to farm it and everything. And I'm worried about what's gonna happen. I've heard the same story from other people up where we live, and it's still, it sounds good, but when it's all said and done, I still get the blunt of the flooding. And I, and that's, that's just, i- i- if it did work, I'd be very, very surprised if I didn't have no problems. And I would hope I wouldn't, but it, it just, it just, farming and them houses just don't mix. If I had my parcel for sale, and it was so, a hundred and eighty acres, I'd say it would be a better fit. But, that's, you know, I just, and I know when you got land, we put land in there to develop, or not develop, but to keep our property values up and really roadside mowing. That was the two things we were after. And, um, and again, I'm just not ready to, to let my livelihood go down the drain because this subdivision going in, and it will. It's my opinion of it, so.
And my question is, if it does cause problems because the engineer has said it would become a civil problem between the landowners and the homeowners, why can't it, is the City of Madison gonna take care of the problem? Is the, the builder, the developer, the seller, who's gonna pay to fix the problems that it caused to adjan- adjoining landowners? Thank you.
All right.
Am I allowed to ask a question, or do I need to wait for the-
What I, what I, I mean, what I'd like to do is get all the questions-
Sure.
-and then we can ask, if that's all right.
Yeah, no, that's perfect. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Anyone else? Sure.
Jocelyn Brower, District Four, and I will be District One. Um, good evening, council. I want to urge you to vote no on ordinance number twenty-two-five-one-twenty-nine, uh, rezoning almost ninety acres, hundred and ninety homes. Um, the farmer that owns this property's livelihood, as you heard, will be affected. I have no doubt about that. Uh, this may be equivalent to the taking of the property when it's destroyed or when the owner's rights are substantially diminished. The building of the subdivision, while he is farming, will most definitely affect his crops with orange dust and drainage runoff. The new residents will be affected as well with the spray from the chemicals in the film, in the fields next door. He has stated previously that he sprays his fields. Um, and, uh, the builder also said he had not. Um, so, that should be correct on, on the record here. I have been to all the planning meetings where this has come up, and I've been to all the council meetings, as you know. The infrastructure has not been, been put in place on the west side of Madison, and the traffic is already a problem. Very little has been done to improve the narrow country windy roads in Limestone County, um, and the schools. Regarding the new plan, um, the new Madison-on-Track, I did not know there was a working farm in this spot, and I'm sure probably the Madison-on-Track company may not have known that either. And that's why we have a council that oversees annexations like this. I'm thankful for that. Um, I want to remind you, I was trying to wrap my head about how many, um, the growth that has happened in Limestone County. Um, while I've been here, uh, the Barnett's Crossing rezoning was thirty acres from agriculture to RC-two. Um, that wa- and then also there was twenty-three acres from AG-two, which is agriculture, to the R-three. There was three phases to that. Phase one had forty-six lots, phase two seventy-five, phase three sixty lots, for a total of a hundred and eighty-one lots. That was approved by this council on December twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty. Bella Woods, um, and I can't keep track. I know there were some dissensions in, um, in this one, and then also the next one, the Bella Woods. Um, the original Bella Woods adds two hundred and forty-eight lots, and Bella Woods West added seventy-one lots for a total of three hundred and nineteen homes on the west side of Madison and Limestone County. Uh, Bella Woods West rezoning for thirty-nine acres from agriculture to RC-two was approved. The west part, the seven, the seventy-one lots was approved by this council on December twenty-eighth of twenty-twenty. Now, in two, the two thousand and sixteen elected council, Bella Woods rezoning approximately eighty acres from agriculture to RC-two, um, seven, and then also one acre was rezoned to business. Um, that was approved by the Planning Commission in November twenty-first, two thousand and nineteen, at the city council meeting January twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty. Um, so that was, then the election would have been after that. Um, just something for our constituents that need to keep track of. And again, I had to remember what has happened in the past. The largest annexation since two thousand and sixteen, but certainly not the only annexation, um, that has happened since then, was near Sedgers and Hardiman Road. That's right in my neighborhood in two thousand and twenty-one. A hundred and twenty-one acres formerly known as the Halsey Property, now Madison Branch. It adds two hundred more homes and a school at Hardiman and Halsey Roads, voted through December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Um, sorry, I'm running out of time. I have so much more to say. Our schools are an issue. My neighborhood, Bowers Road filters directly to Burgreen, Powell, and then to Burgreen and Hardiman Roads. All this subdivision will directly affect behind, uh, James Clements Road. There's a safety issue. We have students. We, they are running across these roads. There is not the infrastructure put in place. Um, again, this was orig- these, West Side is largely unimproved. The streets haven't been widened. Turn lanes haven't been added. Originally designed and constructed to handle rural agricultural traffic.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Brower. Okay. All right, ma'am.
Rachel Homolak. I'm in District Four. Um, I just want to support the Burgreens and support Jocelyn, um, in this property. This was news to me tonight, and I was absolutely shocked. Um, I drive down Bowers pretty much daily. Um, there's no way, and there's no way adding two hundred homes on that road that's, this is gonna work. There's no way. And also with all the agricultural issues and everything, I just think, I texted my husband, and I was like, oh, my gosh, can you believe this? I, nah. So, please listen to your constituents, especially those that live in the area and that drive that area every single day, which I do. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Sir? Hello?
I have a property two-eighteen on our way, and I always just want to kind of talk a little bit about, I've been a farmer for, you know, decades up and have some stuff up in Meridianville. And we've had farms and subdivisions come around us, you know, for decades, and it's never really affected us farming. I mean, you know, I'm, I'm hearing some talk about some oversprays. These, um, these tractors that we can buy now, unbelievable precise. I mean, they're GPS-guided. They, um, they have computer-controlled systems to actually monitor the spraying, and, and they control how, how low they go, how high they go. And I mean, it's, it's, I mean, when it gets, when you put in a boundary on that GPS, the spraying automatically shuts off six inches from the property line. So, I mean, it's, I mean, I had to spray and do my farm all the time. I've got subdivisions on both sides. I've never personally been affected by that. But, you know, a lot of the sprays that you see these guys, these farmers do are like the two-four-D or the Duracor or things like that. These are the same chemicals that TruGreen sprays on your yard. It's the same stuff. You know, there's really not, there's really not a lot of difference. And so, I just would be a proponent of growth in that and say that, you know, Madison City has done an excellent job of providing the best school districts around. Everybody wants to live here because of the community that you have. You know, and you have someone like a Jason Burgreen who annexed their property ten years ago to develop. He didn't annex it to keep it as a farm. He annexed it for you guys so one day he could future-develop it. So, I just hope you guys take that into consideration as well. So, thank you so much for your time.
Mr. Taylor, I'm sorry, what is, what district do you live in?
Well, my house is two-eighteen on our way, Madison, off county line.
Oh, okay, that's you. Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I missed that part. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. All right.
Okay, so, we have, uh, Mr. Mark Anderson, who lives in Huntsville, telling us that, you know, this is not gonna affect our traffic or our roads or our schools or anything, you know? But all of us that live here know how bad it is. And putting another hundred and ninety units, have a heart, okay? They're talking about twenty-four-five? Wait till twenty-thirty-five, you know? It's only twenty-two, twenty-twenty-five. At least give, uh, the other Mr. Burgreen his five years of farming. Um, as far as the retention pond, I can honestly say that- we have had so much flooding from the vacating of the easements. It's all over this city. I have tons of videos. When I ride my bike, I just pick up the, the flooding. We did this thing behind City Hall. The flooding came across into our air-condition unit and flooded downstairs. We all know that. I mean, I know we had to close City Hall. The electricity went out and everything. Uh, if this guy thinks this Mark Anderson, then why can we not put, uh, an amendment in there that should he flood the la- the land of the farmer, that they will pay for it? Because currently, who would be responsible? They'd have to go to civil court. There was just a case in Muscle Shoals of the flooding, and because no one got it on the public record, which we're doing right now, letting you know that if this land floods, the city will be responsible. Because in the Muscle Shoals case, the case law states that there was nothing on the public record, and therefore, the city was not responsible. We have enough people here saying, don't do this, please. We beg you not to ruin this farmer's livelihood or add another hundred and ninety units. It's one unit on less than half an acre. Um, you know, I asked for, the, our roads can't handle this. I mean, if anybody up there says, oh, yeah, there's no problem with the roads, maybe Mark Anderson thinks there's no problem because he don't live here. So, he doesn't know, but the rest of us know. And we also know how bad the flooding has gotten. If they have this type of rain that we've been having lately over there, once the houses get built up and they have their landscapings and the sewers in it, are in, and I don't know what he said about the sewer, they're gonna pay for our sewers? We're gonna pay for the sewers that are, only, they only pay for the connections. That's it. And the private properties have their, their water lines. They're not paying for our sewers. That's another taxing of the public money. Um, you know, it's time, it's almost at the end of the term of this council and mayor, and i- it's time not to push through all this garbage. We do not need this. Until the roads are ready, that's when you can add some more units. Come on, guys. Give us a break. Have a heart. Let the farmer farm for another five years, please. We, the constituents of this city, are begging you not to pass this. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wanting to address council on this? Okay. Saying none, we will close public comments, and first we'll entertain a motion and a second. Move to approve. Okay. I don't remember the rules, so if there is no second, there is no discussion?
Okay. Um, yes, a motion may fail for a lack of second, but I would request that a motion is made and a discussion is put on the record regarding the questions and concerns that have been brought up tonight.
Okay. Can we have discussion? Okay. Can we have discussion without having a second? Okay. So, I move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All right, time for discussion. I just wanted before, I mean, before we discuss, make sure I've got, at least I jotted down what I thought the questions were, and basically I got four main questions. Was the drainage data basically, and how is that mitigated? Traffic on Bowers Road, infrastructure design, what's the current state, and what's it planned, you know, planned for, what's the effect? Any issues that occur afterwards? How do we get those fixed, and then who's basically on the hook to pay for that? And last one I wrote down was, did the Madison-on-Track plan take into account current land use as part of that? That was kind of the last general question that I got. Does that jive with what you guys are tracking?
I have one more question, and it's for Mr. Burgreen. He said that there are five farms surrounding that area. I'd like to know if all five of those farmers crop dust, because it's my understanding that you crop dust, you don't GPS dust, for the lack of knowing anything about crop dusting. But you put, you throw your dust from a plane? No, you throw your dust from a tractor like this gentleman? And I'm sorry, do you mind, and I'm, just that way everybody at home can hear. Thank you, Mr. Burgreen.
It's, we use sprayers, self-propelled sprayers.
Okay.
Not a tractor. It's a sprayer with booms, anywhere from 80 to 120 foot.
Okay.
Crop dusting is only used when we can't, when it's too wet.
But there are times you may
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
I decide, stuff like that.
Sure. And would you say that on those times that you do crop dust, if it's windy, that dusting is not always landing on your property? It could be landing in that retention pond or in those swimming pools, that sort of thing?
It could be, because they're up in the air.
Right.
They have rules like we do, far as wind, called spraying off-target. You're not supposed to do that.
It's an expense for you, I'm sure, you know, because you're trying to concentrate on your land to spray, but you can't guarantee that that land or that spray.
It's a spray. It's actually, you know, with water. It ain't dusting, as they say. It's water. Just like, it's just like spraying on the ground, but it's just coming out of airplane. But it's got the same chemical, so to speak.
Okay.
And everything.
Okay. If you were standing on there, would you want to be hit with it, or if your kids were playing in the yard?
We wear masks, gloves when we mix, and I do.
Okay.
Have to. I mean, you know, if you don't want to die, so.
Probably not too today.
Some of it's poison, some of it's herbicides, some of it's fungicides. That's just part of doing what we have to do. We just have to be careful.
Right. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Public comments are over, but I'll, no, public comments are over, but I'll entertain. What was your question?
I mentioned that if it was approved, would the developers, since he's so confident that it's not going to cause any drainage problems, would he put an amendment in the agreement that he would be responsible should anything happen with the flooding other parts? I asked, I was in my comments, and you did not put it in.
Well, you're, thank you for clarifying. Your comment is actually included in fixing the issues thereafter. What is that process and who pays for that? That's kind of covered in it.
Gotcha.
No. No, I'm sorry.
Can I ask Mary Beth a question?
I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, Mary Beth, two questions. One, I don't understand, first, when it came to the plan and it came to the schools, when we did the growth policy and the growth plan, was this property looked upon to eventually be residential, and if so, was that factored into the numbers that we collectively put together as a city and a schools?
I mean, during the growth policy back in 2018?
Yeah. I mean, did we know that this property would possibly go to residential, or?
Well, I think, I guess since I've been here, you know, I've always been told, you know, a lot of those properties wanted to be residential. When the West Side Master Plan was done in 2016, it actually contemplated a lot of this property becoming industrial. I don't recall if it expected this particular parcel, but the property to the west of it, industrial because of, you know, what we thought Huntsville was going to be doing to the west. So, I wouldn't say, when we looked at those growth numbers, we didn't assign a specific, you know, number to each parcel. But I wouldn't say it was definitive that this was going to become residential, but certainly expected residential in this general area.
Okay.
But as I remembered, that whole general area had, in the West Side Master Plan, hard for me to say, the West Side Master Plan, it was like between 200 and 300 residences in the entire area over there.
That, I don't remember that number, but again, it was, again, we thought this was going to be a school facility.
Right. We even negotiated for a while.
Yeah. So, we thought this was going to be a school facility. There was going to be industrial, but certainly residential nearby. And so, from a high-level planning perspective, you know, we know that land uses shift, right? So, you may have one property that you thought was going to be a school, and now a school's here, and so that other property becomes residential, kind of like Madison Branch. If I may, the elementary school, the school district had identified an elementary school in the southwest part of the city, south of where Russell Branch Elementary is under construction. But when we had the opportunity to get this land, you know, for that school, that school site moved further north to where Madison Branch is, and, you know, that property where we thought will be a school will become something else.
Okay. And then my second question is, I don't understand the drainage. From what I saw in, on the board, the drainage is going from south to north. It's going from Mr. Burgreen's property to his brother's property.
Correct. About 17 acres, about 17 acres of Mr. Burgreen's property drains to the north onto the subject property.
So, the subject property is not draining on his property?
That is correct.
I've never understood why we're talking drainage when his property, his water's going on his brother's property.
Well, what will happen, though, when the houses are there and they're not, the ground is not able to seep in that overflow of drainage?
Okay.
And I mean, I'm not an engineer, so I don't know the answer to that question.
I got you. So, I guess some of these questions. So, the drainage, I mean, what are the requirements from a standpoint of development and drainage?
What if I have our city engineer answer those questions?
Great.
Great segue.
Okay. So, what's your question again?
Just from a development standpoint, right now, what we're being told is the data says drainage goes from property to south to the north, developed property to the north. What are the requirements from a standpoint of drainage effect, you know, the end effect or end result of drainage from that development?
Well, they're required to either meet or reduce runoff from the total site. And so they'll choose a study point, and I believe their study point is east of the pond or southeast of the pond. So, they'll choose that as their study point. And they'll decide what the pre-development conditions are for that, what their runoff is going to be for that area, and they'll apply their design to that, their density of houses, roads, sidewalks, rooftops, all those things, driveways. And then they'll design their pond such that it will receive all the water from, or the water from the same area at same or reduced rate.
Okay. And the size of that detention pond is planned for what kind of, what kind of wet period? Is it designed for a 3X May period, or is it designed for like a 100-year flood, or?
When we do hydrology modeling, typically we'll do it based on storm events. So, the 24-hour storm events of varying intensity. So, I believe, if I remember old previous discussions about this pond is designed for the 100-year flood. Is that right, Daniel? Okay. So, that's how you design it for the 24-hour rate. You don't typically look at the, you know, what's the 30-day rainfall rate. That's not typically what you look for. But, you know, what we usually see is that a 24-hour, 100-year event is going to be more volume than a 30-day rain event, just, you know, if you have a typical, you know, an atypical month or something like that.
I got you. Okay. Can you also help address the infrastructure, so I, Bowers Road, traffic capacity and its current state?
The best I can say is that Andy Summers is a local guy. We use him a lot with the city. He consults with us a lot on our traffic studies, and he says that it doesn't require any upgrades to the infrastructure on Bowers Road immediately. He does mention that there are some upgrades that may be needed, some turn lanes at the intersection with Huntsville-Bowers Ferry Road, but that would be necessary anyway. He basically attributes it to just typical growth would require us to do something like that. He doesn't, now, he did come back and do an amendment, and the amendment talks about verifying some of the traffic count numbers that were referenced in the, I think he referenced some A.L. dot ones in the original report. So, there's a memo where he went out and verified those numbers, and there's actually a little bit less.
Okay. With approval of this, and, I mean, you might not have this math off the top of your head, but with the approval of this and what the current utilization is of the road based on what it's designed for, adding this to it, above, below, you know, not even a, you know, negligible increase? I mean, I, what do you?
According to Andy's report, it would be negligible, negligible difference.
Okay.
As far as, now, we do have a temporary traffic issue over there with a closure, but that's going to be rectified this summer. So, you know, if we were doing, adding 400 cars, as somebody has mentioned, on top of the lane closure, maybe it'd be different. But according to Andy's report, it's, it wouldn't be.
Okay. With the standpoint of fixing issues after the fact, can you walk through the process that you take as a city engineer, reviewing these analyses, reviewing everything, and your stamp of approval that goes on this, or whoever's stamp, to enable this to go forward, and then if there's an issue afterwards, what that looks like?
Okay. I'll let Daniel talk about his stamp on his engineering design. I don't provide an engineering review of this. I do a review over methodology and meeting city ordinances. So, if it meets the ordinances and they bring all the paperwork that they're supposed to bring, and they've done a methodology that I consider, that we consider to be consistent with what's typical, then we would approve it for that. As far as after-the-fact issues, a lot of the times, you know, we work and we do the best we can with the city. If there's things that we can do within easements that can help drainage issues, sometimes years after the fact, we're doing that on Pump House Road right now. We're trying to fix issues that were, that were caused by whatever happened 20, 30 years ago, whenever those houses were built. And so, we do the best we can when we can. You know, as Mayor pointed out, this area, some percentage, maybe, I guess it's about 20% of the area to the south drains towards this pond, you know, they have to receive the water. So, unless they're trying to build the houses well above grade, you just don't see that. You don't see, you don't see people bringing in feet, you know, of fill to build stuff. That's just, that's just not, it's not economical. You just, you wouldn't do that. And it's not something we would really approve. We typically want people to work within the lay of the land, and that would be inconsistent for them to fill this, cause backflow.
Okay. All right. Can you, or can you help answer the problem or answer the question then of putting your stamp on the drawing?
Sure.
For this means what?
Sure. I'm Daniel Felt. I'm with To The Point Incorporated. I'm the engineer of Record. Yes, I'm a registered licensed engineer for the state, in the state of Alabama, and my stamp means that I've done this the best of my ability, and my stamp follows these drawings. We're required to carry errors and omissions, you know, to cover any issue that could happen. But basically, this process goes that, when it's all said and done, now during, it's going to be a contractor's responsibility to make sure the road control we put up is, is as designed and suitable and maintained. And after, we had to do a final inspection with the city in Darrell, and we review the whole thing. We walk it, and we make sure it is to design. And at that point, if it's to design, I sign off on it, saying it's to design. I'm responsible for it. Now, if there is, there is, there will be a homeowners association that will be required to maintain all these things. If they don't do their job, you know, ultimately, that's what's going to cause the fail. But if there's just a gross miss on the design, then I will ultimately be responsible for it. I don't foresee that being an issue here. The sheer size of this pond, it's not a minimized pond for simply drainage protection. It's there for both borrow and because of the set aside that we need. So, we are required to have this large set aside, which is almost a fifth, I think it's 23% of the property, and they're choosing to create a huge amenity lake for that. So, it's not the bare minimum. We're going to have a wet pond here, and there's going to be three-foot of fluctuation over 21 acres. That is a lot of water. I think it's 20 million gallons or something like that. So, we have the capacity to take care of that 100-year storm and more. So, I'm, if we were designing to minimize the size of this pond, to create as many homes around it as possible and not use that whole area, I'd be a little more nervous. But, but the fact that we have such a huge area that this one hilltop drains into, or one basin drains into, I'm just not concerned.
Okay. And I just want to make sure, so, as a licensed engineer, you're essentially signing your PE, your professional engineer license that you took a test for, got, and if you screw up, you're just going to kind of ruin that PE, and that's going to be hard for you to sign.
I will be, I will be responsible for it.
You'll be responsible, but, I mean, at the end of the day, if you make too many mistakes, at some point
There'll be a review board, yes, sir.
Yeah. Okay. All right. I failed my PE test, but I'm, I blow stuff up for a living, so.
Sounds like more fun.
Yeah, well, it can be.
If I may, I just wanted to add on to what Michael was answering you regarding the traffic. So, we did the comp plan update. We ran a traffic model, and that traffic model looked at build-out effectively in 2045. And so, there is an exhibit in our comp plan that shows what the level of service on the collector roads in the city and the arterial roads would be. And for Bowers Road, it shows it would still be in an acceptable level of service, which is either A, B, or C, but it would be in an acceptable level of service once that entire western area built out. It does assume that, you know, certain road improvements go in, but it was showing it would be acceptable.
Okay. Thank you.
Mary Beth, before you go, but wait, before you go, so, could you give a brief Planning Commission update when they came last to the, and what the vote was?
Mm-hmm.
And did Planning Commission have all the information, including that traffic study, to make their decision?
The vote was 5-3. The Planning Commission didn't have the latest update to the traffic study. Mr. Anderson had that commissioned, and we just received that about a week ago, I think it was, or maybe a week and a half ago, and you just received that. So, Planning Commission didn't have that, but at the meeting, Mr. Anderson did talk about just the initial traffic analysis that was done, which showed that there wouldn't be a traffic issue from a, you know, an engineering perspective. Certainly, there's going to be increase on the, in traffic on the road.
Sure. And do we have more development going on over there? Like, are we built out at Oakland Springs? Are there any other subdivision? No?
I'm just going to an aerial.
Okay.
Yeah, to answer your question.
Mm-hmm.
So, you've got the Village at Oakland Springs there to the east.
Yes.
They have not completed that. There's probably another, well, the total area was expected to be about 500 or so, single-family homes. They're still building. You have, east of the Village at Oakland Springs, you have Madison Farms, and you can see where that's roughed in, the roads are. I can point to it if you need me to.
No, I see where you are.
Okay. So, Madison Farms has only pulled a couple of building permits, so they're just at the very beginning stages. North of that, you have Bella Woods, and you can see they're just, and Bella Woods is, again, they're further along, but they still have a ways to go.
Mm-hmm.
Going south from the project site, along Powell Road, on the south side of Powell Road, further east, you've got Heritage Hills, which you could see is right next to Greenbrier Woods. Further, it's almost over to Burgreen, but not all the way. It's between Seagulls and Burgreen.
Do you mind pointing at that one?
Sure.
Geography is not my forte. Okay, thank you.
That's Heritage Hills.
Okay, thank you.
This is Nature's Trail 2. That's in the county. It's not been, it's not in the city limits, but they are still building some homes there. So, Heritage Hills, Nature's Trail 2, Madison Farms, Village of Oakland So Heritage Hills, Nature's Trail 2, Madison Farms, Village Oakland Springs, and Bella Woods. And then, oh, I forgot, there's this, this is Huntsville Brown's Ferry. There is a residential project in the county. I have, I don't know the number of units, but it's, it's in the unincorporated area that they're roughing that all in.
Thank you.
Mary Beth, so I think the last question I had was, did our current on-track plan, massing on track, did we take into account the current land use and its surrounding areas as part of that? I, I think the answer is yes, but I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, so the plan contemplates residential for the subject site and residential to the north of it. It does keep some of the area nearby as place type R.T.A., which is the rural transitional place type. Rural transitional place type would be the same as our, well, it would be with agricultural zoning. Agricultural zoning does allow for homes, but it requires, currently requires three acres per lot. We are proposing a change in the ordinance to only require one acre for a residential lot. But the property to the south is shown as R.T.A. in the plan. The property west is shown as R.T.A. So it, this property is a transitional property, I guess, from the R.T.A. to residential with open space, to a more intense residential as you get closer to Brown's, Huntsville Brown's Ferry.
So they could still build homes on if they wanted to?
Under the current ag zoning, they can. And there's a list of, there's a variety of uses that are allowed under ag zoning. Again, as I said, the current ag zoning requires three acres per unit, so you'd be able to get basically 30 homes, not quite 30 homes. We are proposing a change in the zoning ordinance update to only require one acre. If that gets approved, then they would be able to, if the zoning stayed ag, they'd be able to get 89 units on this property under the ag zoning.
I don't know if, well, I might have a question for you, actually. You mentioned earlier the chemicals. I'm not going to say you're an expert, because I don't even know you, but you sound pretty convincing.
Well, well, one thing I want to pay attention to is that if you'll notice how many subdivisions are already backed up to other farms? And there's no issues, right? But, you know, these sprayers that all the farmers use now, one of the really cool things that they have is an air inductive nozzle that pushes air inside this liquid to push it down to prevent drift. And, and the plain stuff, that hasn't happened in this area really since the Toyota Mazda. You know, it's been years, and they don't foresee that happening again, because there's just too much development in here for that. And, and it's the same thing in our area, too. I mean, we, we just haven't done that in years. But, yeah, the, the machines, the technologies that these farmers now use is amazing. And, and even like the pesticides and the herbicides they use don't even affect their GMO crops. So the farmers that are doing the soybeans and the corn and the cotton, they've even genetically altered the crops, where they're not even affected by these chemicals. So, and like I said, a lot of these same chemicals are what the Trulon guys use in your own property spraying up to your door. So like I said, we don't see any real challenges of that. I think, you know, I do think there's some people say, hey, we don't want growth and that kind of stuff, and you know, and I get that. But when you look at how much farmland's around that, if you let me farm that, I can cut all the way around that and not have any issues farming that and affecting what I'm currently doing or not doing. So I'm just trying to bring a different perspective and light, you know, so thank you for your time.
Well, let me ask you one question, and that's.
Yes, sir.
I guess more towards the P.P.E. side of stuff with putting the chemicals in there. I mean, I know I got a lawn guy that comes and sprays my yard when he puts the stuff in the back of the truck, whatever, and he's getting it in there, getting ready to spray. I mean, he's got a breath, you know, he's got a mask on, he's got gloves on, he's got all that stuff on. But he's still spraying in my yard.
Yes, sir.
I got a dog, I got, you know, and I get a little note that says, hey, don't let your dog go out and lick the grass for the next.
12 hours.
Whatever.
Yes, sir.
So are these chemicals any, I mean, I'm, I don't know, are these chemicals any different than that?
No, I mean, that's what I'm saying, I mean, all the herbicides that you see on the market, whether it's a DD2, or 224, or it's Duracor, and there's various names for it, but it's all like this glyphosate-type chemical that's basically, basically the same thing. And they've been using it for years.
Whoa, hold on, hold on, hold on. I'm asking a question of what I'm deeming as another farmer and an expert in the area. So I'm, I'm asking him a direct question. If I want to ask you a question, I'll ask. Go ahead.
Well, yeah, a lot of that stuff is the same, yes, sir. And like I said, you see him spraying next to all these other subdivisions, and there hadn't been any harm, right? I mean, we're not seeing any, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Only other question I had for you, Mary Beth, was, I think, all the other developments that were talked about, I think some came about in 2018, up until whatever the latest one was, all those development agreements and everything. I mean, what I see from this list, or from this picture, is the plans that they have for all of those was four or five-year build-outs. It seems like it's been a little longer than four or five years. So it kind of sounds to me like, as smart as we want to be, the economy actually does control kind of the market and what's going to happen. So, but does that, I mean, all of those were in that master study, right, for the school system? We anticipated those homes, we put that in, understanding where, what the impact could be for the homes, or not homes, impact could be for the schools as part of that study?
Some of those projects were not contemplated at the time. The growth committee was enacted, and, for example, Bella Woods, Madison Farms, the Heritage Hills project was, and one other project that's further south, were kind of in the wings, waiting for the growth committee to commit their work, conclude their work. But what was anticipated was a certain number of residential units in that area. It might not be, you know, a particular project, because that project hadn't been conceived yet. But there was a certain amount of growth. And so the amount of growth that the growth committee contemplated is certainly accounted for, I guess, not exceeded, if you will, with the projects that have been approved. Likewise, with the comp plan, we have put together a development tracking spreadsheet, multiple spreadsheets. And so counting the number of units that get completed since 2021. And so we've put that together, and we're tracking that, so we keep track of how many more units can get approved. So we are doing that, and we're not exceeding that number. It'll be a number of years before that number gets exceeded. I did want to clarify one thing, and one of the public comments referred to this as being an annexation project. And just to clarify, it's not an annexation project, it is a rezoning project only.
Alright. Sorry, I've monopolized a lot of time talking. Do y'all have questions? Did you have?
No, I don't have any questions for anybody. Just ready to chat about it when you're ready to chat about it.
Well, that's what we're doing now, so.
Well, I didn't know if you had any questions for, if you were bringing anybody up, and you were kind of.
No, I mean, I think.
Was in that part of it, and.
Well, I mean, we've already, yeah, well, we're in that.
Okay.
I mean, I was trying to get answers to those questions, I think.
Sure.
That at least helps us and the public know. So if you have questions or comments.
Yeah, I don't, I, I think my questions have been answered. My comments and my concerns are, you know, there are different ways to spray the farm. You can spray with the crop duster, you can walk through the farm wearing, I'm picturing kind of a hazmat suit with the mask and the gloves and all that. So I'm concerned about overlay, I'm concerned about that chemical, whether, you know, even if, when our yards are sprayed, I don't go out there and stand with a guy and, you know, talk with him. I, I kind of avoid and let him kind of do his spraying. So I, I'm concerned about how that's going to impact the neighborhood. I'm concerned about the chemicals getting into that pond, getting into people's swimming pools. I, I also did the math. I feel like it's fair to say that if there are 190 homes, while not every home will have two adults in it, some of those homes will have teenagers. So I think 400 cars is probably the minimum, because most everybody has two cars, plus you have a teenager or two. I've driven that road, Bowers Road, and, and I'm regurgitating what I said the last time we talked about this, and that my main concern is infrastructure pouring 400 cars out onto Bowers Road. I had suggested putting a roundabout at Powell to the south, and at Huntsville Brown's Ferry Road to the north. We haven't had an opportunity to do that. We haven't had an opportunity to improve the infrastructure. You know, the traffic study may say, as Michael shared, we're okay now, but we need to do something in the future. Well, I, I don't want us to do that anymore. I want us to be okay now, and, and not say, we're, we're good for now, and in five years. We need to be good for a period of time that we can provide infrastructure services to our community safely. Fire and police need to be able to get to those homes safely. So none of that has changed since the last time we talked. So those concerns remain, not even including the impact 190 homes will have to the schools. But mainly for me, it's infrastructure, it's being able to get our first responders there on safe roads, where there's plenty of traffic moving north and south, that they're able to negotiate that area. I drove Bowers Road. If there was a fire engine coming, I would have to pull off the road. And that is, that is just a concern. I mean, you want to do that anyway legally, but physically, I would have to pull off the road. So, you know, I just wanted to share, nothing has changed for me. I, I still have those concerns, and that's where I am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions, comments from anyone else?
I've, I've just got a couple of questions, and I'm looking ahead. I know we're not quite at the development agreement yet, but I want to make sure I'm understanding, first of all, the only two exits out of this subdivision are going to be on Bowers, right? That's the only way you can get out.
That is correct.
Okay, and then I looked at the development agreement and, and the pacing. And I recall, we had this conversation with a previous extension of a development agreement, where I had noticed that the, the pacing wasn't there. We weren't requiring phasing in this next phase. And the argument was that we didn't need it, because they couldn't really bring in more than 30 homes at a time anyway, just because of the cost and the economy, and so.
Yeah, most developers do not exceed 30 units, and a lot of them only do 15 or 20 a year. Depends on the price point, but yes.
Okay, so, and in this development agreement, if I'm, I'm just doing a real quick calculation, because the first phase is, of course, the one with the detention pond, you've got, you've got to get that set up. And you've spread it out about 60, 70, 60, something like that, to get to the 190?
It's about 63, 63, 64. And the phase lines are shown right here. So that's one phase, this blue line, and then this other phase is the red, and then this is this last phase. Or a second phase, I don't know, I don't know which one is one, this will be one, but I don't know if this is two or three.
So in, in this particular agreement, when you phase it, you've, you've mapped it out not by year, but by 18 months. So if you were to take the same calculation that we've discussed before, where it was 30 homes a year, this phasing is faster, like you're, it looks like you're now doing it at 45 homes.
Conceivably, but I, in all of the projects that we have been tracking, that have development agreements, and even some of those that don't, none of them have gotten anywhere close to even 40 units a year. So what, what we've seen is developers have all asked for as high a number as they think they can get in a development agreement. And that may be for investment purposes or what have you. They're trying to sell lots to builders. That doesn't mean that the lots are actually going to get developed in that timeframe. And so that's what's been happening. So I mentioned Heritage Hills, for example, also Three Park Preserve, they, they've done 15 units a year. And, you know, I can give you the numbers, right, with the different projects. They just do not go that high. Now, it's possible that a developer, you know, they'll sell to multiple builders. And so if you have multiple builders going concurrently, they can go a little bit faster. However, this project has got very similar lots. So there's going to be one builder. So again, I, I, I just wouldn't expect them to approach 63 units in, finish that in 18 months.
Okay, and, and I think that pacing is too fast for me to agree to. So I'll just, I'll put it out there that the development agreement, I'm a definite no, just because the pacing is off of anything else that we've ever done, we've ever had in agreement. And I voted no the last time when we didn't have pacing. So I'm never going to vote for something that goes faster than what we're, we've found reasonable in the past. Now, can we go back to the previous chart that showed the roads?
This one, or the zoning?
Either one is fine.
Okay.
So we've talked about, I know, we've had internal discussions since I got in council about Brown's Ferry, Huntsville Brown's Ferry, that I think when Bella Woods first came in, we had talked about that was a potential commercial corridor. And then we were talking about the need to widen that, to improve that at some point. Have we had any discussions of future improvements in timelines in terms of Bowers?
So Bowers is not, the short answer is no. Bowers has not been identified as a road that needs to be widened. When the Skinner was the consultant, traffic subconsultant for the comp plan, they're the ones who did the traffic modeling. And they're the ones who, based upon that traffic modeling, recommended improvements to the roadway system. Bowers was not one that rose to that level, based upon anticipated growth. That's not to say that it, that won't change at some point. As we discussed, as we were working on the comp plan, the traffic analyses typically get done every, you know, five to 10 years, depending on how much growth is occurring, because conditions change. And so you want to reevaluate the amount of traffic on the roads, especially because we're really influenced by what's happening around Madison, right, in Huntsville, north of Highway 72 and so forth. And because we don't control all of that development, but it still impacts the city's roadway systems, the conclusions of a traffic modeling study could vastly change, right, given the amount of growth in the county and in the city of Huntsville. So based upon all the information that we have right now, and what was forecasted to be done in the area, they weren't recommending a change to Bowers. In five years, that, that could be a different set of conclusions. Huntsville Brown's Ferry Road has long been talked about needing to be widened to five lanes, right, two-lane travel, two travel lanes in each direction and a center turn lane. That's a difficult project, because it is multi-jurisdictional, involving the city of Madison, the city of Huntsville, and Limestone County. It is on our books, you know, to widen it. Our traffic modeling does show that even with some improvements, it's still going to suffer from a level of service perspective.
Okay, thank you. And, and I will just say that, you know, we've got two property owners here who we want to respect their, their desired use of their property. There's no one here that doesn't want to allow someone to improve their property that's already in the city. I think for me, it's about timing, first and foremost. I mean, when I look at what we have out there in infrastructure, what we've had planned for road improvements, I'm concerned that it's too fast, the development agreement's too fast. What you're proposing is in an area that is just not well-suited. If anyone has ever driven out in that part of the city, we just don't have the lanes that you would want to have for your kids to drive safely and for you to drive safely. And so either it's a matter of either slowing down, it's not a never, but this is not a great time to be trying to put that many homes in that place at this time. It's not that in the future, we don't see that this property could be developed. And also with the comprehensive plan, when you have a comprehensive plan and you show the whole city in terms of what a place type could be in a city, that does not mean that tomorrow, all of those things are going to happen at once. Timing is critical in terms of how we improve our infrastructure, how we approve certain proposals. And right now, I'm just not seeing that the timing is right for the infrastructure that's in place at that time. That's all.
So I agree with Ms. Bartlett. The phasing of this is concerning. I would also like to see something in the development agreement that after the first phase, should it come in, that there's an assessment to make sure that the runoff is doing what we're told the runoff is doing. So that if there's an issue, the next phase cannot start until that is corrected. Because that would protect Mr. Burgreen's farm.
But his water's going from south to north.
I understand what they have said.
Okay, I understand.
But as a failsafe, I would like to see that written in the agreement, that after the first phase, it will be assessed. If there's a need for improvement, if what you have said is 100% correct, and there's no runoff going back onto Mr. Burgreen's farm, there's not going to be a reason to do anything. It's going to be fine. You can just go on with the next phase. But I would like to see the phases to have a smaller number of homes in them, more phases than three.
May I ask a question, I guess? So the topic that's up for a vote right now is just the rezoning. Later on, we have the actual development agreement. If the rezoning passes, could we make an amendment in the development agreement portion to accommodate what Ms. Spears just mentioned?
If the developer is open to it, then we could do that. And you all would have the option to take a recess and let us work something out, or to just continue this to the next council meeting for us to work on it a little bit more.
Okay. Continue both or just continue?
It's up to you. But, you know, if the rezoning is really the, you know, the land use issue, health, safety, and welfare, and the development agreement is about the deal. So of course, it's a pair going together. And so I would say...
Yeah, kind of hard to divorce it, too.
To continue both of them. But you could separate them out. If you'd like to go ahead and take this vote, then, you know, we could work on the rest later.
Would we have a need to vote on the development agreement if this fails?
No.
Right, yeah.
So then, I think they have to go together. Whether... I don't mind continuing them both. If I were to vote tonight, because of health, safety, welfare, with the current conditions of our roads and the two exits on to Bowers, I would have to vote no tonight if we were to do it tonight.
Okay. All right. Karen, do you have any comments?
Right now, it looks best suited as agriculture, given all the parameters around it. So to change it from agriculture at this point, I would not do.
Okay. Okay. I'm kind of leaning the same way, just given the conditions and what I'm hearing. At the same time, I'm also torn from the standpoint of, I do hear what you're saying, Mayor. And the data that I see shows drainage goes the other way. You know, I've seen kids outside playing when triggery is out spraying. And I haven't seen a kid drop dead yet. So, and I'm not trying to play light of that. I'm just saying it's a reality. Also look at development from the standpoint with the schools. I understand, you know, we don't want to overburden anyone, but I also look at what we had planned for this area. And it just not has, it just has not developed at the same pace in which we expected or anticipated. It's actually gone, from what I understand, and maybe I may misstate it, but it's gone less than what we even allowed for it to do and what we thought it would do. So, but I can also see the consternation over it. And I do see, Connie, in what you said, from a gating mechanism, you know, looking at adjusting the lots. And then even with the standpoint of the water and those things, a lot of times, reality versus what we see from data are two separate things. From what I'm talking to some other folks that do typos and things, it's all in how you gather the data as to the accuracy of it. So, okay. So, I mean, we can either vote on it tonight, or we can continue it.
But continuing, continuing...
I'm sorry.
That's right.
I have a motion and a second to vote on it. If somebody wanted to make a second motion to continue, then that individual could do that if they wanted to. Otherwise, I'll call for the vote in a minute.
I'm not sure continuing will help it, because I can't see anything changing in the next little bit with regard to infrastructure. It's not like we're putting the roundabout at Powell and Huntsville-Brown's Ferry and widening the road. I would prefer we go ahead and vote on it would be, pardon the pun, my vote on that.
I don't disagree with you. I mean, quite frankly, I don't see, I don't see dollars going towards those roads in, I'll just be quite frank, in the near future.
Agreed.
All right. Well, can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Seifert?
Nay.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Nay.
Councilmember Oblaski?
Nay.
Councilmember Spears?
Nay.
Councilmember Powell, Councilmember Shaw, Councilmember Denzine?
Nay.
All right. Motion fails. All right.
Engineering.
And, yep. First up, we'll go into department reports. First up's engineering.
I have, first I have resolution number 2025-175R. This is authorizing a commercial aid to construct agreement with Huntsville Utilities for the relocation of power lines on Project 23010. Hughes Old Madison Pike intersection not to exceed $80,653 to be paid from Fund 38.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just glad to see this happening.
I think, yeah, from agenda review, this is basically to, this will help fix the shift...
Yeah, I mean, this is the first, this is kind of very early on. We're just trying to get the, yeah, we're trying to get the power poles out of the way, so.
Yeah, I got you. All right. Can I get the vote?
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Oblaski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell, Councilmember Shaw, Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
Next I have resolution number 2025-176R. This is authorizing a professional services agreement with Halliburton Surveying and Mapping for a topographic and right-of-way survey of the east side of Hughes Road from Eastview Drive to Conger Road for Project 25021. Hughes Road sidewalk amount not to exceed $10,600 to be paid from the engineering department budget.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I did ask Michael some questions earlier, because I was wondering why it's only went as far as Conger. And he explained that it will continue to go out for those that live along that area. But at this point, they're doing it in-house, so they're only going as far as Conger. But it will continue down east, down the east side of Hughes. And I have seen so many high school students walking on Hughes Road on the east side. So I am just so glad to see this. I think it'll be beneficial and much more safe for the children that live on that side of the road. So thank you so much for doing this.
Okay. Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Council President Oblaski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell, Councilmember Shaw, Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Thank you, sir. Next up is fire and rescue.
I just want to say thank you for your support on the leadership training from earlier.
Absolutely.
You're welcome.
All right, I have resolution number 2025-188-R for the approval to purchase a 42-foot gooseneck trailer from Lone Wolf Trailer Company Incorporated for $27,612.50 to be paid from part department budget and reimbursed from ALIA grant funds. This is a normal grant that we get throughout the year for Alabama Task Force III from ALIA. And the grant award was $28,000 for this year. So this trailer comes in just underneath that, and it will be used to replace the red rescue trailer out here that has a lot of age on it. It's a lot bigger trailer to accommodate all the tools.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Oblaski, second. So, okay. Any discussion? Any opportunity to reuse the old trailer?
I'm not sure. I'm sure there is opportunity. I'm not sure what the plan with it will be. We haven't gotten that far. It's taken us a little while to get to this point, bid, no bid, all of that. So I would say, I don't know that we will have a need for it, but maybe somebody in the city does, but I can't answer that for now.
Okay. All right, cool. Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Oblaski?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell, Councilmember Shaw, Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
All right, that motion passes.
Thank you.
I'd like to know what everyone's animals are when you get back. And you'll know that once you do the test.
Got it.
As part of the leadership training, there's four types of animals. As with the mayor's, there's, what was it, four colors? All right, HR?
All right, resolution number 2025-102-R. And so this is for a software agreement with Evergreen Solutions to take our paper performance evaluations electronic. So right now, there are lots of paper that passes through lots of hands. And so this would just be an automatic system for everybody. It'll be a lot easier for everybody to keep up. It's $9,500 per year. They've guaranteed that cost for at least three years, so that's good. We did look at several other options. This is less than half of the next cheapest option, which I thought was a good price. And it was the only one that allows us to create specific competencies for department.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right. Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Thank you for doing this. Can I get the vote?
Councilmember Oblaski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell, Councilmember Shaw, Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
All right, that motion passes. Legal.
Good evening. I'd like to present ordinance number 2025-195 for a first reading. This comes at the request of Madison Utilities to dispose of some property. Under state law, the city council is required to authorize disposal of either land or equipment. And the equipment that they're proposing to dispose of consists of six different types of trucks. So this is just a first reading. And if you have any questions between now and then, just let me know.
Cool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And now we have planning. Long time no see.
Squeaky. All right, sorry. This is proposed ordinance number 2025-164. This is for vacation of utility and drainage easement. And you can see the area highlighted in this exhibit. This property is on the west side of Shetland Road. It's behind the public shopping center. And the easement is along the north property line. This property has been approved for a commercial site plan, and the vacation of the easement will facilitate this development.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Oblaski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell, Councilmember Shaw, Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
The next item is the resolution 2025-182-R, but I don't believe they need to. That's regarding the development agreement.
Right. I would consider that moot, given that the ordinance did not pass.
Okay.
Okay.
Following that, we have resolution number 2025-183-R. This is to authorize a professional services agreement with McCon Group for a small second phase for our wayfinding program. McCon Group is the company that designed our wayfinding signs, and we want to contract with them to assist us with the second phase. And this contract with them would be $15,000. It's in the planning department budget. Our plan is to put the second phase out to bid within the coming month. It'll be a very small phase. It will not finish out the project, but it gets us a little further down the road.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
What exactly is it that we're doing?
What does McCon Group do?
No, what, I mean, the second phase, what exactly is it? Just different intersections?
Yes, the second phase is going to be some additional signage, yes.
Do you know which intersections are involved?
We're looking at doing a gateway sign coming into Madison on Old Madison Pike. So kind of a, and we haven't done one of those signs yet. So this is one of the more significant entry signs. We are also looking to install some of the, what they're called proximity signs. They're smaller signs that identify one or two attractions, I guess I'll say. They're in various locations. Some are around the downtown. We have some additional one-pole signs and maybe a couple of the two-pole signs that we're wanting to do in this phase. I just don't have the locations on the top of my head. But they're kind of spread out. We'll be adding a couple of signs that will advertise the community center, various locations throughout.
Okay. So it's not actually the signs itself, it's just designed to where we'll put the signs?
So for this particular contract, the designs, for the most part, have already been designed. What he assists with is specific sighting and the location in terms of where they need to be from an intersection, for example. Also, we found in our first phase, there was a sign in particular we wanted to put on Hughes Road, but there's utility conflicts. So we're going to have him work on designing a sign that can go on an existing traffic signal pole. So that's going to be a redesign. We're going to be updating the kiosk signs downtown, because we've got some new businesses coming in, and so we want to update those. So it's that type of work. His first contract, which was the complete design of the signs, was a, I want to say it was a $32,000 contract. So this is half of that, a little less than half of that amount.
Okay, thank you.
Can we get the vote, please?
Councilmember Oblaski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell, Councilmember Shaw, Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
Next item is proposed ordinance number 2025-184. This is for vacation of utility and drainage easement. And this is just a first reading, but this is in Town Madison. You can see the area highlighted on this exhibit. So it's on the north side of Town Madison Boulevard, between Town Madison Boulevard and the interstate ramps, where some additional townhouse lots are going to be built. And you can see it's a small area that we're recommending be vacated. The next item is proposed ordinance number 2025-185. This is also a vacation of utility and drainage easement. And this is also a first reading. This is off of Madison Boulevard, and you can see the area hash marked there. It's on a private drive, but we have a utility easement there. And this, they're requesting to vacate it so that they can put the entrance sign for the Fairfield Hotel that's under construction off of Madison Boulevard. And so that's what the vacation is for, to accommodate their sign.
Okay.
And then lastly, we have ordinance number 2025-187. And this is an ordinance to amend Chapter 8 of the Madison City Code. And this is for the mural section that we discussed at the work session, where we're recommending adding B2, and also the provision, you can see the language up there, that murals on side or rear walls not cover more than 75% of a wall facade unless the mural advisory board approves otherwise.
Awesome. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay. Any Ms. Lyons business and announcements?